Good evening to the Village Morton, meaning of the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, November 26th. If you're watching live on Monday, November 26th, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch us live on the government channel and you can pick up a webcast either now or in the future on demand at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is in two weeks on Monday, December 10th at 7:00 PM, work session, regular session 8:00 PM. And before we bore all of you out of your minds, like, we are going to set aside their regular agenda and undertake our annual Youth Recognition Night, which we do every year in November. And it's an opportunity for us to thank the young people of Pleasantville who serve the community in so many different ways. So I'll move to the podium and we'll invite each group. So the first on our list is the Pleasantville Farm Market. Steve Bates and Peter Rogavin are here. I invite you to the podium to talk about what these folks have done for you, and then we'll call up the market volunteers one by one.
Hello, I'm Peter Rogavin. I'm the president of Foodchester, the organization that runs the market. And this is Steve Bates, who actually runs the market. It's always great to be here to recognize young people who have chosen to spend their free time doing something great for the community. And so we commend all the students and all the parents who are here tonight, who give up their time to do something good for Pleasantville. What we know about the Pleasantville Farmers Market is that since becoming an independent community based nonprofit, we've been recognized as Best of Westchester five years in a row. We have an internship program that gives young people responsibility for managing almost all aspects of the market: the kids' events, the music, culinary events, greeting people, helping customers. They really do it all. And the market itself is really an engine for the village. It attracts thousands of people to our village who come to shop and dine and explore. And what makes that engine run is our volunteers. They do so much, and I can tell you, you know, Steve and I have been doing this now for six years. And in spite of how much ahead of broccoli costs, I can tell you, this is a labor of love. Like, nobody is getting rich at the market, not our vendors, not us. It only works because we have so many volunteers who give up a lot of their time to do all this good work for the market. So thank you all for supporting our mission. There is one other thing I should mention, while I have the parents here, and that is there's one other thing we know about the market. We have a scholarship award every year that gets some, but not a lot of interest. So if you have a graduating senior, please encourage them to apply for our scholarship. Being a volunteer for the market already checks most of the boxes that you would need to qualify for that. So I'm going to introduce Steve Bates. Steve's the market manager. He's the guy who actually makes the schedule. If you have a volunteer, you're the parent of a volunteer who's getting up at 6:00 in the morning and getting over to the market by 7:00, right? Is that when they start, 6:00, 7:00?
7:00, sure.
And you want your child to be on that shift more often. Steve's email is steven@pleasantvillefarmersmarket.org. And just say, "My kid wants the morning shift," and Steve can arrange it.
Steve. And while we have your attention as parents, we thank the parents as well. Because if they're not driving over to that 7:00 AM shift, somebody's driving, it's probably a parent. So we really appreciate the support that you lend the kids as well. Most of what the interns are known for, that Peter referred to, are those moments when they're visible at the market, supporting one of our many functions. And there are four hours that were open with shoppers in the market and while we're running music and kids' events. The market's intern window, however, is seven hours, which means there's 90 minutes before a shopper ever arrives, and 90 minutes after the last shopper leaves, that we continue to have intern teams working furiously, usually during those two, the beginning and end of the day. And so I thought it would be worth it tonight, just to call attention to that. Because we all know what they do when we see them running around with green shirts. And when we've left as a shopper, most Jewish parents know, they continue to work very hard. Aside from their own tasks, these terrific interns, in tonight's weather, which we seem to have every Saturday now, as this is our regular weather and our interns recognize it, despite all of the tasks that we give them at the beginning and the end of the day, these terrific interns repeatedly leap to any vendor in need to lug coolers, or set up, or break down tables, load or unload vehicles, get a vendor tent up safely, or to get it down safely. And with the wind we've had, they all know it takes about six people to put a tent down in a hurricane, which we have all the time now, it seems. So just bear that in mind. When we're thanking them tonight, it's they're visibly at the market, working hard, and they're also invisibly working at the market, working hard. And we so appreciate the time that they donate to us. Given the many efforts of our interns, and that some of it goes somewhat unseen, we appreciate being able to visibly thank them tonight. And so I'll read out their names. I see most of them in attendance tonight. Are these in alpha order?
They are in this order.
Uh huh, and that is, yeah.
So when you come up, receive your certificate. And if you want to loop around the back, I'm sure the reason you volunteered was to get one of these little backpack gizmos. But loop your way around the back, and the rest of the board can say thanks, and you can make your way around.
Terrific. Brendan Cooper may be absent tonight, but I mentioned him. If he's here tonight, please come up, Brendan. Grace Cusack, if you'd come up, please. Cecilia Folman, if you'd come up, please. Jonathan Hayes, if you're here tonight, please come up. Bridget O'Mara, if you'd come up, please. And Patrick O'Mara, if you'd come up, please.
I see a trend here.
Ellie Pearlman, if you'd come up, please. Jordan Rosin, will you come up, please, Jordan? Noah Solomon, if you're here tonight, if you'd come up, please. Victoria Stargiati, if you'd come up, please. And Josh Swyvam, if you'd come up as well.
Thank you, sir. What are you going to tell me about the indoor market opening mission?
I'll send out the email, interns, so you know your shifts tomorrow. And for those that don't have a shift, we hope you come by on December 1st. We open up our indoor market for the season. We're open every week in the Pleasantville Middle School Cafeteria. Okay? Thanks, everyone.
Tom Conady, come on up here. Tom has for many, many, many years led an extraordinary group of young people. And if you would share with folks all that goes on with the Holy Innocents Youth Group?
Sure.
And then we can call out you.
Hi, my name's Tom Conady. I'm the youth minister, I guess I haven't said it already. Holy Innocents Church. I recognize my seniors, most active seniors, been with me for the last three years, involved in the good works that we do as a parish, as a youth group. Some of the things, we feed the homeless on the street in Manhattan is regular for We make meals at the Ronald McDonald House. We do a number of charity events. We work at our church at different events and do service there. Basically, we're about service and social justice. So we try to just make a difference wherever we can. We're pretty active. Most weekends, we're doing some service somewhere in the community and beyond the community. I wore my Tennessee shirt because the kids decided we're going to go, the mission trip this year, we'd be going down to Nashville, Tennessee this year. They're just good kids. They're the ones that come into my youth group, they're usually joyful spirit, and they serve eagerly. All I do is give them some direction, and they just, they meet my every expectation. So I'm just very proud of my youth group, our youth group, and I'm proud of these kids. I see some might be missing tonight, so we're going to honor whoever's here tonight.
Hey, you want to call him out?
Kira Hickey. Tommy Cavanaugh, Tom Cavanaugh. Patrick Doherty. Kaylee Raffsky. Patrick O'Mara.
This is our second appearance on the night. You only get one.
Brianna Brayer. And Melanie Ipean. I don't see them here tonight, but I'll take their gifts and recognition. Thank you very much.
Our next group is the High School Student Visions. The advisor, Joanne Puglisi, was going to attend and wasn't able to on this fowl and difficult night. So I'm happy to read this little squib, unless there's a student representative who would like to talk about what Visions does. Any takers? Hey, good job. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, I'm Sarah Wynott.
And I'm Nick Puglisi.
We're the presidents of Visions Community Service Club. Visions is an active student group focused around the involvement of students from Plesmo High School with the Plesmo community. Our goal, with the collaborative efforts of the Chamber of Commerce, Plesmo Recreation Center, and Pace University, is to encourage students of Plesmo High School to become active members of the community by promoting events and programs that improve and enrich the Plesmo community as a whole.
And at this time, we would like to thank, sorry, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank our Chamber of Commerce liaison, Toni Emerson. She couldn't be here because of altercations. So she, we like to thank her for all of her years of work with this club, and without her, this club wouldn't be what it is today. We've done so many things thanks to her, like we've done the Fish Bowl at Pleasantville Day. We've done the care packages for Maria Faroish St. Children's Hospital. We've done countless other stuff, but we're still growing, and we thank her for every single thing she's done for us.
Thank you, guys. Pardon? You're the only two here tonight? All right, well then, we're going to deliver to you your certificate, Sarah.
Thank you.
Your certificate, Nick.
Thank you, Sarah.
Someone can be the keeper of the other three, and someone should take the other three back.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I want to thank these folks for not only the good job they do year after year, but that very nice description of what they do, and to echo their comments about Toni Emerson, who has been just an anchor in this community, has had some headwinds lately, but if Toni is listening, we assure you that our thoughts are with you here tonight. Is Justin Perlman here? Come on up. Justin was nominated by the high school assistant principal, Greg Fonda, for his leadership in organizing and supervising a volleyball fundraiser held on November 2nd for the Break the Hold Foundation, established by the Halloran family in honor of their son. This fundraiser resulted in $1,600 raised in one night in volleyball teams consisting of students, alumni, and the community. Justin devoted a considerable amount of time organizing this event and ensuring its success. So great service, an impressive report, and I can't think of a better or more Pleasantville-like service to have provided than to help the BTH Foundation. So thank you, Justin. Sam Lord. Come on up. I'm going to hand your certificate to your father, but stop for a moment. George Smith, who's the ambulance corps captain, nominated you, and he was unable to attend tonight. He reports Sam has dedicated countless hours to the ambulance corps while on and off duty, having amassed over 175 hours in 2018 so far, and doing so while balancing a full academic schedule and a part-time job. Sam is a shining example of a dedicated volunteer and has served in his community in emergency situations on a number of occasions. So an extraordinary report, great service. I suggest that your father read this, and he felt that would seem too self-congratulatory. So it is my great pleasure to congratulate you, and it comes from a completely unbiased source. Pleasantville Fire Department, Lenny Balducci and Kyle Saul. Are they here tonight? So I'm going to ask you to take both certificates on behalf of the team. Junior Corps, Pleasantville Fire Department. For over 120 years, the Pleasantville Fire Department has been proud to serve the community. Our youth organization, the Junior Corps, for members under 18, gives the youth of Pleasantville an excellent opportunity to learn teamwork skills and mature into responsible, community-focused adults. It is clear that you have already done that in a very large part, and I can't thank you enough for not only the work you've done, but fulfilling our expectation that you will never leave Pleasantville and you will become a senior member of the department, and at some point, we'll be thanking you for being the chief. So two things to say, first is if we have handed anyone a certificate that has their name spelled wrong, they must tell us. You should not suffer in silence. I think we did pretty well, but you shouldn't spend the rest of your life with this thing framed over your mantelpiece with your name spelled wrong. And if we've missed anyone, please let us know, and we'll catch up with you. I know there were a couple of groups, often represented here, who were not able to be represented tonight, and it's perhaps an opportunity that we may include those groups a little later on in the season. But it is, I'm reminded every single day in my life, as the mayor, and I know I speak for the rest of the board, at the extraordinary moments when folks throughout this community rise up and help somebody, whether it's an organization, getting some event done, helping people in need. It has been that kind of community. And certainly, the adult leaders of all of these groups have been role models for young people to do it. But we've had generation after generation after generation of young people who, just as Tom indicated, arrive with a joyful giving spirit and deliver not only their energy and their muscle and their minds, but the kind of good spirit that makes us live up to this name, Pleasantville. So one of the nicest nights of the year to say thanks to you all, thanks to the students who are on it tonight, and thanks to the parents who were instrumental in bringing up such fine kids. So as reported to Lenny, you're not allowed to leave. It's okay if you're going to college, you got to come back. Thank you all, appreciate it. Welcome back. We just had a brief break while the parents and students who were recognized tonight made their way out. Again, congratulations to all those young people. We'll go back to our regular agenda. I had a few announcements to make, and I know some other folks did as well. First thing I wanted to report is those of you who follow our meetings regularly will know that the Community Choice Aggregation Program of Sustainable Westchester, which was the mechanism by which about 17, I think, communities in the initial round banded together through Sustainable Westchester and secured a fixed-price contract for electricity that a high percentage of Pleasantville residents are included in, has come up for renewal, and there was a new bidding process. So anybody who did not opt out of that plan when they received a letter and postcard a couple of years ago would have received a letter this past week indicating that the program is going to be renewed, that the rates have been secured at, I think, a pretty favorable level. And no action is required if you wish to stay in the program. If you don't want to stay in it, you can opt out at any time with no penalty of any sort, I will say, and you can go to westchesterpower.org to take a look at the actual statistics. Folks that were in this program, which is the majority of our residences in Pleasantville for the past two years, have saved a modest amount of money collectively across the communities that were involved. Some millions of dollars have been saved relative to what the default rates were through ConEdison. So as reported previously, everything remains the same. You still get your service through ConEdison, your billing still comes via ConEdison. If you have a repair or a service issue, ConEdison still provides it, but the source of the power is purchased through this municipal buying cooperative. So had a couple of concerns, which is some folks have gotten this letter and had forgotten or not noticed the transition we made a couple of years ago. And secondly, there have also been some other companies that have been sending mailings around the same time. If you read the fine print of both letters, you will find that many of the offers that are made by commercial companies are at higher or dramatically higher rates than those secured by Westchester Power. So Eric, you want to describe them?
Sure. The official letter will have Constellation, which is the new energy provider, and
And also the old one.
And the old one.
Right, they won the bid again.
Correct. And the village seal as well. So that's how you're going to be able to tell the difference. But yeah, there's one in particular, Good Energy, that sent out similar mailer at the same time. So we've sent out a knee blast, talked to a couple residents who've been confused, but you know, we're asking the public to keep an eye out. One thing I do want to mention is a question that I keep getting is, you know, is ConEd losing money on this situation? And they are not. They do not make a profit off of the supply portion of your electric bill.
And are not allowed to.
Correct.
They're just wires and poles.
Exactly. So wanted to get that out there as well.
So two more things to say. The folks who got this letter from the village and Constellation, reporting the renewal, are folks already in the program? If you wish to remain in the program, you need do nothing. This is just a reporting to you what the new rates are, which are still quite favorable. I can tell you, obviously, everyone makes their own decision. I view it as definitely favorable and can report that I am certainly in it. But the other point is that folks who are not currently in the program, but might be interested in being a part of it, can go to westchesterpower.org and not only find out the information and the rates, but also find out how to enroll if you would like to be in it. So this all devolves from 10 or more years ago, when the state deregulated the energy markets and anticipated that utilities like ConEd would be the poles and wires, and that private sector competitive entities would provide the power. That didn't happen as fast as anyone anticipated. And I would say with conviction, based on where I stand, that the village's participation with the other communities in Westchester for this Committee Choice Aggregation has been a net win for everybody, and I personally believe it was a good choice and one that served all of you well.
And one more thing to add, you may opt out of the program at any time.
With no penalty?
With no penalty.
So if you are comparing the offers of other alternative energy sources, you need to look at that, not only to see what the rates are, some of which are nearly double the rates that will come through this program, but also what the terms are to get out of it. In many cases, there is a requirement that you pay the rest of the contract, or there is a fee to get out of it. None of that's true for this program, and that's part of the bid requirement that Sustainable Westchester and the communities that support it require, that folks are able to get in and out whenever and however they wish. That said, folks that get into the program later may not get the rates that exist right now. So again, if you're interested in the background, westchesterpower.org, take a look. The much discussed and much delayed repaving of Wheeler Avenue, we sent out a bunch of emails warning you that we were going to be repaving Wheeler Avenue. Consecutive scheduled nights turned out to be problems for one reason or another, and we're off to the spring, right?
Correct, yeah. Mostly Mother Nature having their way with us. But yeah, we've kicked that can until next year.
All right. And then just to remind folks that the 2019 Pleasantville Music Festival has been scheduled for July 13, and the winter pre-sale just got started. So you can go to pleasantvilmusicfestival.com, take a look, and if you are interested in signing on early, it's your cost-effective way to do it. Pleasantvilmusicfestival.com. Mark your calendar for Saturday, July 13.
Tickets are also available at Direct Cinema.
Okay, great.
As of today.
All right, other announcements?
I do. The Pleasantville Community Scholarship Fund is going to be holding an evening of wine and spirits at Best Wine Purveyors 210 Marvel Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, on Friday, November 30th, from 6:30 to 9:00. It's a really nice event, they hold it every year. It's a fundraiser, got to buy tickets. There's wine tasting, different kinds of spirit tasting, and there's some hors d'oeuvres, and some auction items to be sold, all kind of related to wines and spirits and the different types of, you know, glasses and corkscrews and things like that. It's a really nice event, a good community event as well. So I urge everybody to attend, to sign up. It's $40 in advance, it's $50 at the door. You can RSVP to Linda Dillon at 60 Academy Street here in Pleasantville, or if you go to the Community Scholarship Fund of Pleasantville website, and I'm sorry I don't know the official URL number, but I'm sure you can find it, Community Scholarship Fund of Pleasantville website, you can buy tickets and pay by PayPal, or I think credit card as well. So please do come and support the Community Scholarship Fund and enjoy a great night of wine and spirits, together with your friends.
Other announcements to be made? One more thing came in, and then I just want to comment on a work session item that we had. The folks at the Pleasantville Community Garden collected a bunch of folks and headed up to Hilltop Hanover Farm for a gleaning event. I'll just read what they said. "After a false start due to frozen ground on Friday, the team of PCG volunteers was ultimately able to dig up some stunning purple and orange carrots, loads of parsnips of all sizes and shapes, and the farm crew cut the wonderful collard greens that had survived the frost. Between the gleaned produce and a donation from Hilltop Hanover, community members in need will receive 664 pounds of fresh produce."
Wow, that's great.
"Thanks to all who participated," this is the garden folks speaking, "and a big shout out to PCG's Helen Mirror for spearheading the efforts."
Yes.
What a beautiful way to kick off the winter season. Then the last thing I wanted to mention is, we had a work session just before we started our meeting, talking about our communication efforts and talking about the ways that we can find to do a better job of speaking to all of you, thinking about the means by which we are able to address all the many different forms of communication, Facebook pages, newspaper articles, letters to the editor, publications we might send to you. All of that is a manifestation of the fact there's a lot going on in the village. We realize we need to up our game. It's going to cost some time and likely some money, that at the moment is unbudgeted. We're going to have to find a way to do it, but just wanted to let you know that we are at work on hatching a plan to do a better job of all of that. All right? All right.
Do we have the holiday lighting and all that? Do you want to-
Oh, yes. Please, I completely forgot. The holiday lighting.
Oh, right.
I had that on the other list and wasn't looking at it.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want to do it?
No, no, I just thought I remembered another item we forgot.
Okay, go for it. I'm not going to forget the holiday lighting now, so you can.
Oh, oh, just that the coyote presentation that was going to be, was it the Night of the Snowstorm?
It was the Night of the Snowstorm.
Was moved, and it's now this Thursday, the 29th, at 7:30 PM at the Clinton Street Center. It's going to be Chris Nagy, who is a wildlife biologist, who works with the Gotham Coyote Project and also with Mayanus River Gorge, who's, from what I've heard, one of the nation's leading experts on coyotes, is going to come speak to us. So I encourage anybody who's interested in that topic to attend.
Thank you for that. So that's this Thursday, the 29th, 7:30 PM, Clinton Street Center. And the event I had forgotten was our annual holiday lighting, the Tree and the Dreidel at the Manville Road and Edgewood Triangle, is this coming Wednesday, the 28th, at 7:00 PM. Be there if you can.
And don't we also have a meeting tomorrow night?
We do. That's a local neighborhood meeting with the folks down on Hopper Street, which will be taking place at the Rex Center as we talk about some issues down at the fields and potential reconstruction of some of the parking and circulation. All right.
Okay. Oh, right.
Back to the boring stuff.
Business.
In the cadre of correspondence, we received a petition from residents in the neighborhood of Southview Street who are concerned about overnight parking, number of vehicles increasing, causing a situation where Southview Street is pinched off where it's very, very narrow with cars on both sides of the street. And they have asked us to take a look at this and consider limiting overnight parking to one side of the street between the driveway, one Southview, and the intersection of Bedford Road. So we will take a look at that and get back to the community, and if we propose to change it, it would require a public hearing.
Is that there, by the way?
It is, yes.
Okay. It is pretty narrow.
It is pretty narrow, yes. Okay, then to the resolutions, Nicole, 245.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign the agreement with BFG, planning to conduct a downtown Pleasantville parking study for a fee of $6,900, and the agreement is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we're in the midst, as those of you who watch often know, of thinking about a bunch of changes in the downtown, some of which will add parking and some of which will lose it. Eric, you want to touch on the mission here for BFJ?
Sure. So BFJ is a world-renowned planning consultant. They actually assisted the Village on their comp plan update. They also have an expertise in traffic and parking, so we're going to engage them to do a parking analysis of our downtown permitted metered and metered parking spots. It's one of the aspects, is part of the secret process, that we need to evaluate. We think they're the right team to do it. So they're going to come out, take a look at Memorial Plaza, Cooley Street, the other lots in the downtown area, see, they'll visit multiple times a day to see how occupied it is throughout the day, and will make recommendations on how best the Village can utilize its parking, whether it be through metered spots and permitted spots and the like.
Thank you. And as Eric already mentioned, BFJ has a long history with us, not only assisting us in developing our comprehensive plan update and writing the new zoning for the block that includes the post office, but they have also represented us ably in a number of specific missions, and their partners and staff are, I would dare say, already at second base in thinking about these problems for us, and so they're clearly the right tool for this job.
And I should also mention, we asked for proposals from two other firms, so we thought this was the most competitive.
I saw in there that they're going to do it for a week, leading up to the 7th of December, so it'll be next week, right?
Yes. If we execute, if we're able to execute by tomorrow.
Right.
Which I'm optimistic about.
Is that a fair estimate of year-round parking demand?
That is standard protocol in the world of parking studies, yes.
Which is to say, you don't want to choose a week that is clearly low demand.
Middle of August, right. Yeah, right, right. It's probably not going to be lower than-
Right, I mean, I think it's an average-demand week.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Most approved. Looks like you can execute.
Thank you.
246.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign the agreement with Valuation Plus to provide appraisal value for Village property parcels in the Cooley Street parking lot and adjacent to 70 Memorial Plaza for a fee of $2,200.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, it's a matter we discussed in work session about whether it was truly necessary to do this. The parcels in question are small triangles that would allow us to straighten out the property line for 70 Memorial and also establish a straight shot for what would become a pedestrian route that would lead you from Memorial Plaza down towards Key Foods, currently headed down an alley. If the project proposed at 70 Memorial, which is before the Planning Commission right now, is approved, the result of that would be a beautifully landscaped pedestrian route replacing the alley on this straightened-out property, and the Village would receive a permanent pedestrian easement for passage that way. So if it turns out that we do need this, it's approved to go if we say yes, and if you're able to determine, Eric, that it's not necessary-
Right.
-we'll save the money.
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most approved. 247, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the request from the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce for use, I'm sorry, for use of the Memorial Plaza gazebo and personal support for music in the Village on Saturday, December 8, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Here's another one we should have announced. The Chamber of Commerce, as they always do, are planning some holiday efforts to create an enjoyable environment downtown. Saturday, December 8, singers from Pleasantville High School Camerata will be going door-to-door in the shops from 10:00 AM until noon, singing seasonal songs, and the Holiday Instrumental Ensemble with musicians from the Pleasantville and Valhalla Schools will perform at the Bandstand in Memorial Plaza from 11:00 AM to noon, and in the Old Village from 1:00 to 2:00. And at 11:45, in the middle of all of that, both groups will join together at the gazebo to perform together. Thank you very much to the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. David, 248.
Determination that proposed actions are Type II actions for purposes of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees in the Village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York, the Village is considering undertaking the purchase of machinery and apparatus to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing, or maintaining Village improvements, including a dump truck to be used by the Department of Public Works, the project, the cost of each item of which is $30,000 or more, and whereas pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the SECRE Act, and regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation, other state in New York being 6 NYCRR, Part 617, as amended, regulations, the Village desires to comply with the SECRE Act and regulations with respect to the project. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York, as follows. One, the project constitutes a Type II action under 6 NYCRR 617C25-
Point 5C.
Sorry?
Point 5, 617.5.
617.5C25.
Just in case you want to put that on your refrigerator.
In case you're looking it up as I'm speaking. And no further action under the SECRE Act and regulations is required. And number two, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a second?
Second.
That mouthful of stuff sets us up to the next resolution, which is authorization of the issuance of bonds. All in favor of 248?
Aye.
Motion approved. 249, Nicole.
Ah, okay.
Your good luck here.
Yes.
You do not have to read every last bit of it.
Okay.
Just the relevant parts.
All right. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York, aka the Village, as follows. Section 1, the Village hereby authorizes to purchase machinery and apparatus to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing, or maintaining Village improvements, including a dump truck to be used by the DPW. The cost of each item of which is $30,000 or more at an estimated maximum cost of $225,000, and to issue an aggregate $225,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated cost of the aforementioned class of objects or purposes. All right. Shall I skip ahead?
No, as further described in the record, I think is fair to say.
As further described in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, you want to just clarify what the storm of words means-
Sure.
-of buying a truck?
So in order to ban or bond this, well, first off, it's replacing a dump truck from 1992 that's on its last legs. It's one of the frontline plows that we use every winter, and it's about a 10- to 12-month ordering period. So we wanted to get these resolutions passed so Jeff can put in a purchase order and get that in the queue so it's available by next winter. The plan is not to actually go out to market until we do the larger borrowing for the Plaza and Manville Road, but again, we wanted Jeff to be able to put his order in. Again, it's replacing a 1992 dump truck that's over on miles and over on age, and the mayor and I had the opportunity-
We were under it.
Yeah, to see under it, and it's seen better days, for sure.
30 years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
But it has certainly served us well, so.
Definitely.
And kudos.
What happens to the old dump truck, out of curiosity's sake?
So now it moves, I think his intention is to keep it, but it'll be more of a backup use than a frontline.
It's arrived at the point where it does not, I mean, there are areas in the undercarriage that are rotting through and has been repaired a number of times, and so the heavy-duty work of serious plowing is like the rest of us getting harder as the years pass.
Old dump trucks go to Florida.
Yeah, right, right.
All in favor?
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I see two quotes attached, one for, you know, the truck, $116,000, and the other one is for, it says freightliner trash, $103,000, that's around $220,000 all in. That's one truck, correct?
Right.
It's the truck and the chassis.
It's a dump truck. They're not cheap.
I know. I'm not complaining, I'm just, you know, peace-stabbing.
You'd be shocked by the amount of money that we're pouring into the old one to keep it on the road.
Of course, no, no, every once in a while you got to step up and buy the new one. I'm not complaining about it.
But it's wild.
Serious, serious money. I will say, these are very serious trucks.
Of course.
But it's serious money, so.
Good.
Is your anticipation that this would ban?
Well, yeah, really going to leave it up to our financial advisors when we go out with everything else, but that's still up in the air.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And while we're at it, a shout-out to our current and past mechanics-
Yes.
-for keeping a truck like this on the road as long as they have, given the heavy-duty work it does.
And keeping it on the road for one more winter.
Right.
One more winter.
All in touch with it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 250, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, well, this is a long one. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of community service worker Gary Gibbs, effective December 9, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Gary will be known to some of you who may have received a parking ticket from him in his role as a parking enforcement officer, but we are very sorry to see him go, very glad to hear that he has a new opportunity that will further his career. But I will say, it is the rare person who can give someone a parking ticket and make it feel at least partly okay, and Gary is that guy.
Yeah, sad to see him go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most approved. 251, Joe.
Resolve the following budget amendments are hereby approved as listed below. To appropriate fund balance to the general fund, $150,000 is going to be a transfer to capital for street resurfacing. Increased revenue and expenses capital fund, $150,000 interfund transfer from the general fund to street resurf, I'm sorry, to street resurfacing. Budget transfers capital fund, closed projects and return balances to the appropriate funds, $1,463.28 from the account Hobby Street Parking Lot, transfer to account general fund, $4,396.84 from Business District Master Plan Fund, transfer to the general fund. $1,258.50 from Technology Improvements Fund to transfer to general fund. $2,414.59 from DPW renovation for records storage to transfer to general fund. $1,207.30 DPW renovation for records storage, transfer to water fund, and $402.43 from DPW renovation for records storage, transfer to refuse fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
So the $150,000 we're appropriating from fund balance, we're expecting reimbursement from the state of New York. That was the grant through the-
Marble Avenue.
For Marble Avenue, right. We have to expend the funds in order to get reimbursement, so, and then these other funds were, was just closing out, basically, open accounts that we, open lines.
So that $150,000 for Marble Avenue reflected our part of the project, another $150, I think, for the Thornwood part of the project.
Yeah, town of Mount.
Thanks again to State Senator Charis Murphy and our county legislator, Margaret Quinzio, for their role in helping to secure those funds, and finally, Marble Avenue is a smooth ride.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 252, David.
Resolve that the pre-check register dated November 26, 2018, covering check numbers 91611 to 91699, is hereby approved as listed below. $1.2, sorry, $1,225,381.70 to the general fund, $710 to the special purpose fund, $250,014 to the water fund, $352,610.64 to the capital fund, $146,297.83 to the refuse fund, $2,080 to the trust fund, for a total of $1,977,080.31.
Is there a second?
Second.
So lest you fear that we spend $2 million every two weeks.
It's an employer of retirement.
Right, we have two big, big payments budgeted to our required payments to the retirement system, so it's not as bad as it looks, but it does cause one to say, "What?" Any further comments or questions on the check register?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 253, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes from the Village Board meeting on November 12, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes include a recap of the presentation by Rob Danielle of O'Connor Davies, PKF O'Connor Davies, the accounting firm that did our annual audit for the fiscal year ended May 31, 2018, an all-around pretty positive report. Did we get that up on the website?
I never got the PDF from them, so I'll have to follow up.
If you could chase Rob so that the PDF of the PowerPoint presentation he had would be available to anyone who was interested. Of course, you are welcome to the entire audit if you're so inclined, but the auditor's 20 or so-page summary, I think, is probably a good executive summary for anyone who would like to dig into it a little bit. Any other comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Most approved. 254, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the retirement of motor equipment operator Edwin Rivera, effective December 31, 2018.
Is there a second? Edwin has worked here for 34 years, 18 years in sanitation and 16 years operating the sweeper and plowing. He wrote a warm note expressing the good feelings he has about his work here, and we send the same good wishes to him as he retires. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck.
255, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of Eric Cassarella as a part-time available recreation assistant for Panther Club, job code title 0269, at a rate of $20 per hour, effective November 27, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Welcome, Eric. Any other new business? Any comment from the public? All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all. We'll see you in two weeks. And a big shout-out to the young people from Pleasantville and the leaders of the groups they represent on tonight's youth recognition. Thanks.